Yeah.
Good one, Mark. But again, like I said, we just want to add here.
Mayor Mike Hennig, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's call the order of workshop meeting for July 19th, 2022. It is 5:00 A.M., 4:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Escovia?
Here.
Councilmember Vlanto?
Is excused.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Elarg D'Amico?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let's go to communications from the public institutions.
Number one is a ratification of request from Billy Heather of the Gospel Church looking for cleanup projects to be done throughout the city as part of a global day of four churches, July 16th, 2022.
Any discussion, council?
I had a discussion with some of those young folks while they were down on Central Avenue, by between the Leaguer and the West. They were doing a great job, and I thanked them on behalf of the City of Dunkirk. They're a Gothic church. It's a gospel church.
Gospel?
Yeah. But they said they're trying to make a change in the community.
Absolutely.
Welcome to it.
Good. Number two, what's that?
Let me just pick that too. This one is coming after the fact. But Ed and I had a conversation about it, and I talked with Lou Palacetti at City Hall, and we decided that cleaning the sidewalks from Fifth Street to Route 5 and then on Fourth Street from Central over to Main would be nice, and we used Lou's template of City Hall clean sidewalks to take them look like that, and by and large, these guys really did a good job. So I wanted to just tell you that I did work on our labor before I told them what to do. Apparently, I wanted to keep everything, all the relations smooth, so it turned out well for everyone.
Okay.
Does anybody know how many people participated?
Locally, they were probably 10 to 12 people out here, but they had several projects going, and they were weeding in other places. I believe they were weeding at the Cineplex also, and several...
They said they had 50, Bob, sure.
Yes. Okay. All right, number two?
Number two, request from Carlton Hamlin on behalf of the Dunkirk Yacht Club to use the east side of the driveway leading towards the seawall where the club entrance is located for their annual Commodores Party on Saturday, July 30th, 2022.
Any discussion, council?
We've had some controversy on this over the years, and it's... We didn't know how many cars it was going to anticipate because it is quite a wide space there where it's gravel and how many cars that... And I know last year they had asked if the younger people could park away from it and keep it open for the elderly, the older Camaraderies on it. And I don't know how many people and how many vehicles this is gonna... And we didn't want them right on the grass grass. Was that not correct, Mayor?
Yeah, so normally what we do is there's a... Our parks department basically goes out there and they designate the area that they can use for parking, and when they run out of parking, they run out of parking.
And that's all that's...
Right, and then we did get an email from the chief. The chief of Orlando basically stated between the parks and the police department, they'll be in contact, so...
And in their letter, it did state that if it was... The earth was soft, they would not utilize it.
Okay, that was part of the request.
Yeah.
To have the city mark off it, like the mayor. Just mark off an area, that's where it'll park.
That's fair.
Okay. Number three?
Number three, request from Juan Rivera of Unique Cars Club to have a City of Dunkirk police officer assist with traffic control after the car show on Saturday, July 30th, 2022, at the Chautauqua County Fair Club.
Any discussion, council?
Has the chief sent anything out?
Didn't. I read through the request. The only thing I would say is, you know, we can get up there if we have a car available.
Sure.
And it might be wise for him to give us a call when we're about to begin. The other thing about the request is recommending which way to send the traffic. We can take that into consideration, but probably leave it up to the officer at the scene to figure out which way to go.
Okay. All right, we'll take that under advisement. Uh, number four?
Number four, request from John Tofa on behalf of the First Ward Falcon Club to close South Surbo Street between Lake Shore Drive East and Chestnut Street on Saturday, September 3rd, 2022, and Sunday, September 4th, 2022, from 6:00 P.M. till midnight for their annual Labor Day street dance.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, five?
Number five, request from Megan Bach to have a bounce house at the Cooks Pavilion at Point Rashid Park on Sunday, August 7th, 2022, for her son's kindergarten graduation party.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's go to number six.
Number six, notice of claim from Henry Penzek of 3789 Franklin Avenue for damages caused to his pickup truck allegedly due to a sinkhole on Lakefront Boulevard.
Any discussion? And number seven?
Loudspeaker application request from John Tofa on behalf of the First Ward Falcons Club to use sound system for live bands on Saturday, September 2nd, 2022, and Sunday, September 3rd, 2022, from 6:00 P.M. till 11:00 P.M. for their Labor Day street dance.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. Let me go back. Mayor, do you have anything for us for communication or disapproval messages?
No, we did attend the opening for the Chautauqua County Fair this morning, and that's about it.
Thank you. All right, reports are standing in special committees. I'll start with Councilwoman Escovia.
Nothing here.
Okay. Well, nothing. Okay, I ain't got much either. Let's go to unfinished business?
We have none, sir.
Okay. Prefiled resolution?
Number 68, resolution authorizing submission of fiscal year 2022 CDVG Annual Action Plan 200.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, the demolitions, is there a to-be-determined list? Or we have some definite places that we're not finished with, you know, the answer?
Yeah, so we have a list of properties that we have conflicted from the auction from the land bank that are basically demolitions, and we haven't had the chance to inspect them yet from the inside to get a really good look. It's kind of like an outside look, and ones that we know are bad. So, well, once we get... Or at least the land bank has possession of them, that we have control, we will make a priority list. To be honest with you, though, at, what is it, $70,000, that might get us three houses. So, it's... There'll probably be... The list will... There'll be more need than funds available.
Right, right. And also, it says here, reprogrammed funding. So that means that we do not use that 1,800 and some dollars that was left over from the Salvation Army food pantry, and now it's going to the senior center improvements? Is that right?
Yeah, basically, unused program activity funds that, after a certain period, and that they're not being spent, and we give the sponsor, the subrecipient, the opportunity to spend them, and if they don't have anything, they'll... What they do is just basically forego, and, you know, officially in a letter, and then we just take and reprogram it into another activity in that same year. In this one, we're going to be replacing windows that are basically shot in the senior center. The people that are leasing the space and obviously aging, they're... They got plastic on them, and the windows are just iced over in the winter. It's horrible, and it's inefficient to heat it. So, that's what we're doing with that project, and we're going to make sure that, hopefully, there won't be any supply issues, and we'll be able to get that done right away as soon as we get these funds.
Okay, I just have one more thing, one more thing that I am going to say at the meeting, and that's... So our city gives monetary support to CRIK regarding roof repair and down payment closing costs. So would citizens need to apply through CRIK? So that's what I will ask you in the following.
Yes, basically, they are the subrecipient of a program that benefits only residents of the City of Dunkirk and those that meet the low mod income limitations and have emergency housing repairs, or if they're first time homebuyer program, it helps them to purchase homes in the city. And it's a great program to keep people in their houses and to get younger people in the first time homebuyer program into the houses in the first place.
Okay, I didn't know we supported that monetarily, so that's good.
So how it works, just to understand, is essentially they're a pastor, and they're the administrator. So they're a subrecipient. It's not that we support them in the sense that we're paying for their...
Not totally.
Their costs?
What?
No, no. So it's that money is a pot of money that essentially we put into an account with CRIK. All of that money goes into the program. It doesn't pay CRIK's, any of their administrative costs.
Okay.
So it's essentially up to that amount goes to a first time homebuyer in $3,000 grants or for emergency repair. Again, I don't know the dollar amount. They get up to a certain amount for emergency home repair, be it a furnace that goes out, a roof repair.
Okay.
Something of that nature.
And the advantage of having CRIK, who has extensive experience in this area, is they do all the intake, the income intake. They do all the project management, and we just basically verify all the, you know, the costs that come back in either closing costs for the first time homebuyer or the roofing jobs, and, you know, they do all the bidding. And so that's a great program for us, and it helps them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have one on that. Is that the figure that's quoted there, is that using up all of the 2022 grant allocations?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, nothing further. 69, we got a walk-in?
Walk-in resolution, number 69, 2022, resolution authorizing Department of Public Works to construct new Wright Park parking area.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I think that there needs to be, like, on the farther side of that, on the Ocelot Street side, there needs to be like a nice little tree lane to distinguish between residence and commercial, and perhaps we could do the same with the 30 Ocelot House there, going to, you know, going to love to Lakefront Boulevard as well. You know, just to kind of distinguish the parking lot and have it be set, you know...
I would refer that to DPW. You got a committee meeting coming.
Next to your front chair.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion on walk-in 69?
No, that is just a necessary thing that we need to do for the congestion down there, and I'm sure the mayor will agree with that, too.
We can talk in more detail once we go into the regular meetings.
Just to note, too, that we have full council support. I just want to clarify for all the council members, especially those of you that are new. It's not the law department's job to seek sponsors for resolutions. It's the departments themselves, and oftentimes that comes through the committee meetings, and where a lot of that action happens first. There are some times when something comes in expedient, that's the term walk-in, where in the scramble, either the department head and/or we come in and help out. Just as a policy matter, not everybody gets called. Usually, the people that sponsor, it's coming from that particular committee.
Right.
They're the ones that usually have already had this conversation with the director of that particular department. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that if we didn't call or email you, it's not because we're singling you out, it's because we've already had sponsors from a previous committee meeting, or the department head has already spoken to... Again, all we need is two sponsors. Not everybody needs to be a sponsor, but we do understand that if you want to be a sponsor, what I recommend is you send an email the week when resolutions are due to myself and the cape, my paralegal, and just say, hey, if you got any resolutions you need a sponsor for...
Well, let me know. Right.
And that's a very easy thing to do, but I just want to clarify that because I think there's been a little confusion as to how that process works.
And I would just like to add to what Richard said is, with Councilmember Stoyles here on the safety, and I'm also on the safety, and I'm on DPW chair, and that is including parks, and I've worked with Mr. Woodbury on this issue of what needs to be done down there. So we've done it within the two departments that we are chairpeople of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else in 69? All right, if not, new business?
We have no new business here.
Okay, no new business? Can I have a motion? Nichols?
Back here.
Second by Stoyel.
Councilmember Escovia?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember Elarg D'Amico?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, everybody up in the chair.
Yeah, we got to do the real meeting now. The real McCoy?
Same thing.
Tomos?
Better, okay?
Hang on, I might have... Yeah, I don't get it. I'm requesting hazard pay.
Dude, you have to...
You too?
I have a boy, Randy. Where'd it take more than me?
Hey, I need hazard pay.
So you have no idea?
Do they have any insurance on it?
Do you have any insurance on it?
Call to order the regular meeting, July 19th, 2022 at 5:30 PM.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Here.
Councilmember Lamontow is excused. Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, certification of prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the meeting of Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York this 19th day of July, 2022.
Okay, can I have a motion for a resolution?
So moved. Second, Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations?
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or non-german to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is now open.
Gary Fredericson, 750 Deer Street, Dunkirk, New York. Something I've noticed in the past month or so, the intersections of Deer and Seventh and Main and Seventh, there's dirt bike motorcycles zinging up and down those streets. They're not stopping at the stop signs. I know at least one of them doesn't have plates on it. I don't know about the other two or three that I've seen, but I know one for a fact does not have a plate on it. I'm just wondering if there's some way that maybe we could put a little bit of attention on that, those intersections up there, maybe. It's annoying, it's a nuisance, they're doing it 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. People are sleeping, they're zinging up and down through there. And I almost hit one of them one day because they didn't stop at the intersection of Seventh and Deer. So I'm just wondering if maybe we could do something to try to address that.
I agree with you. Same thing with those e-bikes, I almost got one up that way, too.
I almost did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Summerfeld? Brooks Avenue Citizens Advisory Committee. I noticed that there's a new sign up at the point that's in really big letters, talking about parking. And within the last week, I noticed someone stopped with their hazard lights on, not 80 feet prior to that sign. And it's obvious that those signs really don't work, so I reiterate my comment from the last time about using more passive methods to keep people off the grass, if that's the intention. And I'd also like, but the police chief isn't here, to know the difference between parking, standing, and stopping. And shouldn't we be using the most restrictive of those to prevent parking in places we really don't want people to park? And that's all.
Thank you. Captain Wachowski, can you just give us a definition?
Parking is when the engine is off.
VNT wise? I believe standing is stopped in your vehicle, parking, you exit into your vehicle?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's the basic.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, last call, once, twice, three times. Privilege of the floor is closed. Communication from the mayor, including disprovable messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to announce that the city did participate in the opening ceremonies this morning for the Chautauqua County Fair, and it will be ongoing this whole week.
Thank you. Communication from the public and petitions.
Number one, ratification of request from Billy Heather of the Gospel Church looking to clean up projects, looking for cleanup projects to be done throughout the city as part of a global day of churches, July 16, 2022.
Okay, obviously, this is already happened. So I'll still need a motion on this one.
So moved.
Councilwoman Luskowiak?
Nichols.
Seconded by Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number two, request from Carlton Camon on behalf of the Dunkirk Yacht Club to use the east side of the driveway leading towards the seawall where the club entrance is located for their annual Commodores Party on Saturday, July 30, 2022.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, I would just like Mayor to reiterate what he did say in the workshop about the fencing off in the designated area where they would be parking.
Certainly, we did discuss this with the chief before he went on vacation, and the Parks Department will work with the Police Department. Normally, we rope off a certain area that's designated for them to use for parking for this event, and that's where they can park.
Thank you.
And they did put a notation in their letter that if the ground was soft, that they would not utilize it.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as?
So moved.
Subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions. Stoyl?
Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number three, request from Juan Rivera, Unique Car Club, to have the City of Dunkirk police officer assist with traffic control after the car show on Saturday, July 30, 2022, at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I believe this is going to go to, Chris, I think, on the availability of an officer?
Yeah, I would recommend that they do this call. Like I said in the workshop, he recommended a certain direction to send them. I think I would rather leave that up to the officer.
Yeah. That one, could you notify them? Call the Police Department, let them know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
When I did talk to Juan, he did say that he just wanted them so that they could exit Waldorf Road and be able to get on, so they could get on to the thruway.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if most of them were turning that way, then we'll send them back.
Thank you.
Okay, no other discussion? Can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Luskowiak?
Nichols.
Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number four, request from John Toffe on behalf of the First Ward Falcon Club to close South Serval Street between Lake Shore Drive East and Chestnut Street on Saturday, September 3, 2022, and Sunday, September 4, 2022, from 6:00 PM till midnight for their annual Labor Day street dance.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, it was nice with their letter that they did go door-to-door to the residents there, getting the approval for the street dance.
Okay. Okay, not hearing more. Can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions?
Luskowiak.
And who was the second, I'm sorry? Councilwoman Luskowiak.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number five, request from Megan Bach to use the bounce house at the Cooks Pavilion at Point Rashid on Sunday, August 7, 2022, for her son's kindergarten graduation party.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as the approval subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions?
So moved, Nichols.
Luskowiak.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilwoman Nichols, seconded by Councilwoman Stoyl.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number six, notice of claim from Henry Pensek of 3789 Franklin Avenue for damages caused to his pickup truck allegedly due to a sinkhole on Lakefront Boulevard.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, I'll make, I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilwoman Luskowiak?
Nichols.
Seconded by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number seven, loudspeaker application, request from John Toffe on behalf of the First Ward Falcon Club to use sound system for live bands on Saturday, September 3, 2022, and Sunday, September 4, 2022, from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM for their Labor Day street dance.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate assurances and usual conditions?
So moved. Seconded by Nichols.
Motion by Councilman Stoyl, seconded by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Okay, reports of standing in special committees. Councilwoman Luskowiak?
Yeah, I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to let the First Ward citizens, in fact, all Dunkirk citizens, know my process to get requests accomplished. It's behind the scenes with the mayor and the department directors. I find that I'm able to have real conversations and find out a lot, and a lot is getting done. So don't hesitate to call me. My number is on the website. I don't want anyone to feel neglected, and I respond to everyone. And also, I remember pre-COVID, we had inmates from the Brockton Shock Incarceration Prison work around the city, and I was wondering, Randy, will they be starting that again, maybe next year? I remember they helped out a lot in the nicer weather, we could use it.
I can actually address that.
Okay.
Councilwoman, I was actually there for a commencement speech. They had a graduate class the other day. Apparently, that was shut down due to COVID. And it just, it's one of those things where we have to begin that conversation. So I started speaking to a couple of the directors, the superintendents there, and mentioned how much we would love to have their assistance again for those kind of projects. And, you know, it's an ongoing discussion that Randy and I will have with them going forward.
That is awesome. Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyl?
I think we're going to take care of my thing in the walk-in, in the department.
Okay. Councilwoman Nichols?
Yes, just our Parks Department did a super job by having the Preservative put on The Whispering Giant last week. And we're going to have, next week at a DPW meeting, we're going to have Mr. Sober possibly bring down the plans for the surround to keep him protected for the winter months. And maybe possibly that would be a year-round protection for him. Just this past weekend, we had a major softball tournament in First Ward, and our DPW, all departments, several council members, did an outstanding job getting the fields ready for all of our out-of-town and local players. But the most important thing was to drive through there on Saturday night after all the events took place. There was not a paper, a can, a bottle, or anything laying around. It was like the fields were ready just to get started and playing ball. It was just a wonderful, wonderful feeling. Thank you to everybody that was involved in that. It was a long haul with the drought we had to get the fields ready, but it worked out beautifully. Also, I would just like to thank everybody in our parks or streets, whoever was involved in getting the long tedious job of getting the docks removed from the foot of Main Street to their rightful places. It's been over a year and a half venture since the storm brought them to that location. It's great to see that it's cleared up. Summer camp, we're in the second week of summer camp. All is going well, the children are so excited. If anybody has a chance to get up there and watch, it's an experience. It's just wonderful. Let's see, brush pickup, we're in Third Ward this week. Please have all your stuff out at the curb. And just a quick reminder, try to keep them at reasonably small handled, like the guidelines state on our schedule, and not make it too tough on our street department. Let's see, what else? Is there something else I need to say? All I want to do is ask Randy if there's going to be a bid going out soon for street paving.
Yes, Engineer Andy Bone met with Senior Industrial Worker Tim Gutoka today to go over the streets that we preliminary have, and they're prioritizing those to see what we can afford to do. We won't be able to do as much as we did last year. We did $1.2 million under the mayor's guidance last year. This year, we'll have a little bit less than that, because they're getting back to normal amounts from CHIPS. We did get reimbursed a full amount of that $1.2 million. We got a check at the end of June for about $675,000 to close out that. And we'll have, we'll see what we got left for this year. We expect to go out to bid and accept the bids the second week of August, and do all of the paving in September. That's one month earlier than we did last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just my final comment is, E.J. Hayes from Economic Development, I met with the Revitalized Dunkirk this morning on a tree management issue, and it was at the point. And Steve and Mary Reese did a walkabout at the point, and they marked off and tried to get a guesstimation of how many dead trees were there, whether they be ash or other. And they came up with a figure anywhere between 230 and 250 dead trees at the point. So we're going to have to somehow decide how we're going to get them. And Mr. Lyons from Forestville did inform us that when these trees, the ash trees snap, they snap off in five-to-eight-foot sections. And all we need is a couple good windstorms, and we could have a disaster at the point. So we need to look at how and what we can do to address that issue. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Real quick for me, Alan. Southeast corner, Lake Shore Drive East and South Jerboh. There's been complaints by some residents. I drove by this morning, trash in the backyard, furniture, couldn't walk across the sidewalk. I'm guessing you've been involved in this already?
Yes, there's actually, we've had dealings with this in the past. Actually, been to court on it, but currently, there is a violation notice has been issued for the situation. So we're currently addressing it.
Okay, thank you. Randy and Mike, also in that same area, can you please check for me? I assured the residents that they were on the paving list on South Jerboh. Can we just make sure that when the time comes, we can take care of them?
Yeah, that road's pretty bad, so we'll definitely take a serious look at that.
All right, thank you, that's all I got. Unfinished business?
None, sir.
Let's go to prefiled resolutions.
Number 68, Resolution authorizing submission of fiscal year 2022 CDVG Annual Action Plan to HUD.
Any discussion, council?
Yes. I see that on the resolution, our city gives monetary support to the Chautauqua Home Rehabilitation and Improvement Corporation, CRIC, regarding roof repair and down payment closing costs, as is listed on the resolution. So would Dunkirk citizens need to apply through CRIC for this, Vince?
Yes, CRIC is a sub-recipient of our HUD allocation. And what they do is a tremendous service for this, these programs. They do the intake for income eligibility, they do the project management, they bid the contract, they bid out the projects and manage them, the construction phase. And then basically, what they do is they present to us with all the eligible expenses, and we put it together and pay out all the expenses, usually directly to CRIC, and then they disperse it. So it's a very good program, and we're, you know, we're pleased to partner with CRIC in doing housing rehab and helping people purchase new houses here.
Thank you. Awesome.
Any other discussion, council? Hearing none?
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
69 is a walk-in. Okay, I need a, I need a motion to add in number 69 as a walk-in?
So moved.
Nichols, do I have a second?
Luskowiak.
Luskowiak.
Councilmember Luskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elaj D'Amico?
Aye, Carrie.
Number 69, walk-in resolution, number 69, 2022, Resolution authorizing DPW to construct new Wright Park parking area.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, yes, we do need to talk with neighbors, I believe, regarding this. And also, on the far side of that, from Serval to Ocelot, it would be great to put a line of trees in order to differentiate between resident and commercial, and also perpendicular, I mean, parallel to Lakefront Boulevard as well, because there's residences beyond that, such as 30 Ocelot. A line of trees, you know, around the parking lot in that section, that V-section, to differentiate between residence and commercial. And I think that that is necessary in the design, so I wanted to say that.
Any other discussion, council?
Yeah, I would just like to say, this is just the footprint of what we're going and trying to do down there. We need to get a parking area as a safer, a safer place for all that's down there. And Councilmember Stoyls and I, we've been working on this for some time to try to make... to make things a little bit more accessible in a safer manner, and the beautification aspect of it with trees in that, wouldn't have to come through a DPW, or if we got funding from another phase of the Wright Park project down there, that would, we would be able to have funding for such, um, trees and shrubbery, or a decorative fence or something at that time. That was my discussion with Mr. Woodbury.
Yes, there's been a lot of it going on, um, I can attest for myself on the number of calls we get on parking issues, uh, safety issues down there, so I think this is going to be a, a short-term help. I think it's a good problem to have, obviously, there's, there's a lot more traffic down there, so things, obviously, people are going there, so I think we need to add this, in my opinion. Any other discussion? If not, clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elarge D'Amico?
Aye, carry.
New business?
None, sir.
None? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Nichols?
Aye.
Can I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Stoyel?
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Elarge D'Amico?
Aye, we're adjourned.
Tell him you're turning.
Go ahead, crybaby.